Next to me yet.
Oh. How's he doing?
Ah, he says better. Looks tired.
He always looks that way.
I always feel that way.
You have the app?
Rebecca can join Zoom now?
Yeah.
Yeah. She can, yeah, Dave can, she can, everybody can. We are live.
Is Rebecca our new councilperson?
Yes, ma'am. Rebecca Matlos.
Okay, so this is the Portview Borough Workshop Meeting for Wednesday, August the 5th, two thousand twenty, twenty, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty twenty.
It's six thirty P M. Okay, Marky.
Okay. All right. First up, we'll go through some committees.
What about Dawn?
Dawn, you want to go first?
Sure, sure. Hey, before I get into my report, let me talk about seven twenty-six Romine Rear.
Thank you.
He was up for the demolition hearing. The, he's hired a, he's hired a lawyer and they're hanging their hat on the fact that they state that that there's a retaining wall behind the building that is stopping them from doing any work. And they're stating that that wall is a borough wall. Well, I'm gonna give, I'm not gonna go into the details now. I'll give, I'll read it whenever I give the report to me at the hearing. But that wall is definitely positively not a borough wall. It's a private wall on private property. So that shoots down all his, his theory that we're holding him up. So I just want council to know that that wall is not a public wall. It's, it's, it's on private property and it's about three feet in on private property. And that wall was constructed because when they built the house, they had to dig out part of the hillside. And when they dug the hillside, they had to stabilize what they dug out and they put that retaining wall up. And it's not the type of retaining wall that we would build. It's not designed to our standards. It's not, we wouldn't go on private property to build it. So it's my personal opinion, that wall is, is private.
Yeah, it's just four by fours, aren't they?
No, it's. That wall's cement, right, Dawn?
Ye- yes, yeah, yes.
Okay, and, and that wall, Dawn, it's still away from his foundation. If you look at his foundation. Foundation's all cracked and he never fixed it for years.
And if you look, if you look at the prints that I have, that wall is lined up exactly with the neighboring house. So it's all on private property.
Okay.
Hey, John, I lost everything on my computer.
Hey, Dawn.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's, it's not, when you say the wall is on private property, it's not on property owned by this property owner? It's owned by a different property owner?
No, no, it's owned by that property owner.
Okay, great. So Dawn, you're gonna stay for the public hearings?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll read my report. It's, I go into detail as to why it's a private wall. Okay, under my report, I reported that the street paving program has been completed. I know it's premature. Thought to what you might want to do next year. And what I'd like to do is come December, January, advertise if you want to do a twenty-one program, two thousand twenty-one program, advertise then so we could get a deep, good price. But again, we finished the program at the contract price. There were no change orders. Item number two to P V A A building. Duquesne Light finally put the, connected the power to the building. The plumber was there today and the electrician was there today and yesterday.
Let me comment on that real quick. Bobby, do you know that the power is now hooked up to the salt garage and the door works?
Yeah.
Garage works. Salt garage works. Lights all work inside the other building. Yep.
Okay, and that wired, it was on the ground by the pavilions, all removed, so the safety there is gone.
Yep, everything's gone.
Hey, Donnie, I got a question.
Yeah.
You know when Shane's fixing the replay, uh, to continue with the cement work over by the restrooms and the kitchen?
No, I, I don't, I can't give you a report tonight, but I'll interrogate him tomorrow.
Cause Elvis is waiting for him to do that section, cause he wants to get that generator hooked up back in that corner. And he wants to go through that doorway and he don't want to do that until they get that cement in. It's all framed off. So he's waiting there for that.
Then I'll get into that tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And speaking of the P V A A building, I have an invoice here tonight for twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. And it's for the generators for putting in the power switch, the generator and transfer switch. It's, it's approximately half the invoice. Now, this invoice is to be paid out, paid out, I understand, under the program where we're getting a U S Steel grant. So I don't know how you want to handle this tonight. Do you want to approve this invoice or not?
Well, first of all, the U S Steel stuff, we're having a meeting in a couple more weeks. We submitted all our stuff. We don't know what's gonna happen till we have the meeting and see where it's going. So if we can hold up on that till next month.
Marky, Marky, I thought this was a separate grant.
Yeah, it was a separate one, wasn't it?
Yeah, my fault. Kenny, you're right, you're right. We got fifty grand from U S Steel. We already got the check. It's in our bank. So we do have that money on, sorry.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I was thinking of something else.
Yeah, the invoice is an amount of twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. I would need approval tonight to pay that.
Yeah, we can do that.
They didn't hook the generator up yet. You okay to pay this?
Yeah, that's only half of it, Mark.
Okay, all right.
The transfer switch is already hooked up.
Okay.
All right, good. Thank you, Donnie.
I'll bring that up to the meeting then.
Right.
Real quick.
Yeah.
How long does that cement have to cure before they can put the generator on there?
Couple of weeks.
That's all cured, Brian. That's in the back.
Yeah, that's the one they put in.
Oh, he's waiting for in the kitchen. Okay, so, okay.
No, he's waiting for that sidewalk in front.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
It's all framed in and he can't do anything. He just wants to get it pushed on that slab so he can gimme it over and get it done. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, as you are aware, under the C D forty six, we did get a hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred, five hundred and ninety-three dollars to pave Liberty Way. Now, let me tell you where that project stands. That's in the hands of COG. They're doing the contracts. And Carla told me that that project won't be advertised perhaps until October. So I think we're looking at a spring paving project, not just, it won't be done this year.
All right.
Now, while we're talking, while we're talking about C D projects, I just got word today from the COG. The C D forty-seven projects are due by September the eleventh, I think. Is that right, Ken?
I, we haven't, we haven't had a meeting in July, so I really.
Yeah, okay, they're due September the eleventh. Call, last year we submitted for the Liberty Way paving, which we got. We got some demolition, so you may want to, you may want to request more demolition.
Okay.
The Glen Avenue Embankment, they rejected it last year. They said it was a good project, but they just didn't have enough money. So I would recommend we resubmit that one. And the other project we advertised, we asked for was Glen Avenue Extension. So between now and a few short weeks from now, council will have to let Melissa know what projects you might want to submit for the C D forty-seven projects. Again, I'm recommending we, we submit that Glen Avenue Embankment.
Well, make a list up, Donnie. Donnie, make a list, give it to Melissa. And then we can all talk to Melissa and decide, so we can get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the alley paving, as you know, was completed. There were no change orders there either.
I'm muted. I can't hear anybody.
Uh oh.
I said, paving was, there were no change orders. Uh, we have a G E D T F grant application that was submitted to pave Liberty Way. Also to do some paving around the P, the new recreation building. So as you know, we got, already got a grant to pave Liberty Way. So we'll, if we are successful and we get a grant from the G E D T F program, we'll use all that money to do some work around the recreation building.
All right, good.
We'll pave the road leading up from the door building up to the recreation building.
Great.
Okay, four oh four Dursen, there was a drainage issue there. The people did hire an engineering firm to review the runoff discharge into the street. And they hired Gateway Engineers. And I spoke to Gateway and he said that, you first, he came up with a solution which I rejected because it still dumped water into the street. So he said that he had another idea and I told him he had to dig a pit. And I haven't heard from him recently, but I'm sure that I'll be hearing from him. That completes my report.
Hey, Dawn, I have a question.
Questions, Dawn?
Yeah, I do. The G D forty-six demolition, we received sixty thousand dollars for our four structures, Burbank, Portview Avenue, Trimble and Crossman. What would be our next step on that? Sixty thousand, six oh.
Yeah.
What would be our next step on that?
Uh. Again, that'll go through to COG and we'll have to wait until they get the contract finalized with the county.
Okay. Kind of like the one we did now.
Everything's frozen. Everything's frozen and spinning.
This might take a little bit, okay.
Am I live? It's our meeting live right now.
Melissa, we're hearing you.
Yeah, according to Carla, we probably won't hear anything on a demolition. We won't be authorized to advertise until October.
Okay, that sounds good. Another question for you, and I, I might unite in this, I don't know. What's the deal with Romine? When are they gonna pave that? You know, when they did that water company.
I don't have an answer for you, but I'll find out.
Dawn, Melissa talked to the water company about that. And they, they hired a private contractor and he's backed up supposedly. And when he gets freed up, he's gonna do it. So who knows when that's gonna be.
Okay, well, I was just hoping from Fox about it, you know?
Yeah, you can, Dawn, let Dawn still make a call and see if he can put any pressure on it.
Right, yeah.
All right. I do have one final item. Well, I did get the second. I did get a second agreement from West, the Pennsylvania Water Company for an easement. And gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I'm telling you now, I'm telling you, still don't sign it. There, there's still some issues that have to be resolved. And I'll talk to Pat McGrell about that. I, I, I just can't let them, let you sign a blank check.
All right, well, let's get it resolved so we can get this project done and paved.
Hey, on that issue, Mark, I suggested to Melissa that council vote to approve the easement and the damage agreement subject to final approval by the borough engineer and the solicitor, so that we don't have to wait an entire month.
All right.
Well, be good.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, that completes my report, Mark.
Okay, no other questions, Dawn?
If you have.
Hey, Dawn. So you still gotta stick around for the hearing, but you could probably.
Right, right.
Walk away or something. Okay, next up, who do we want to go with next? Go with next. Brian?
I have anything. Dawn, Dawn, talk about everything I want to say. Just pass me up.
All right, I'll just go on my phone, who I see first. Next I see Kenny. You got anything, Ken?
Uh, we got a few things. We had that rabbit raccoon up on Burr Bridge.
Okay.
Uh, we have people requesting that we do the trap and release program.
I'm saying, no, no, no.
And I've been talking with Donna Prizlak about it. She's trying to make some phone calls. She has some people that owe her some stuff, so she's trying to get something set up. But they're pretty booked up the whole year of doing the trap and releases elsewhere. But we're trying to do one for April, March and April, end of March, beginning of April, cause that seems to be the mating season of all these cats. And she wants to get them before they do start any mating. And it'll be easier then to, the warmer weather. So she's trying to get that set up now. I think December they take requests, so they can set up their schedules for the year.
But they won't do this year, Ken?
She said it's very hard to get somebody. She's gonna make some phone calls.
Okay, you're gonna try it.
And see if she can get somebody up at Burr Bridge. And she wants to go up and look at it. We don't know exactly how many cats. Dougie, we asked him, he is not sure. He said two, he saw like two of them around, but nothing.
Yeah, that's, that's down the road from the, um, yeah, that's down the road from the, so I'm guaranteeing there's a bunch down there, but.
Okay. And I went down to nine oh three Rebecca today.
I'm gonna have to let everybody know.
Melissa, you're hearing you.
Okay, well, I need to tell everybody my internet went down. So the only thing that I'm doing right now is over the phone. So he is walking me through what we're gonna do to try to get my internet back up. So that's my.
When you get it back up, you just let us know. Otherwise, we'll continue.
Okay, thank you.
So the gentleman on nine oh three Rebecca, it's like the third house down on the right. He has no real parking. His mother is sickly. And he can hardly get the ambulance there. He has to get the fireman up there to block the road, so the ambulance can pull in and they can get this, his mother out. The, what he would like was a handicap spot in the front of the house. I told him, fill out an application. We just approve it and we'll paint your curb, you know? And then as for the back, it's that, what's that alleyway back there?
Garfield.
Garfield, yeah. Bobby, can you take a look at that tomorrow? It goes down so far and then it's like grass. Is there any way we can do millings down there to finish up?
We, we, we did away with that alley here, if you remember. We said we would not plow it.
Yeah, we're not gonna plow it.
Let me give everybody an update on that alley. Years ago.
Thing is, thing, thing is, if we go into that alley and we put parking signs, then we're responsible, I feel, and then we'll have to plow it and we'll have to maintain it.
Okay, wait a minute. Everybody, wait a second, Bob. Years ago, we did all the research on the alley. That alley is totally private. We quit doing snow plowing like fifteen, twenty years ago. That alley's been private. We have nothing to do with that alley.
We better take the name off of it.
Well, they, well, they still named it, but if you want, if they want to do whatever, Ken, they have a right to do whatever, but the property owner has to do it.
You'll see, the problem is, it's only one way in and one way out. There's no two ways to.
Yeah, there's, there's not even a turnaround.
No, you can't.
There's not even a turnaround back.
Yeah, you gotta back out.
You have to pull in and back out.
But it's all private. He'd have to extend it down to his property and make a turnaround or do what he wants.
Well, he's trying to buy the property next to him. It's been vacant. And then he was talking about, he has a buddy that has a, a plow that could probably get in there and dig that out for him, but, but, yeah, he has no way, but he's gonna apply for a handicap, so.
Yeah, we can do that out front, but let him know the back is totally private, the borough, nothing to do with it.
All right, yeah, cause I thought we did one down. I wasn't sure if that was that one or not, but.
Yeah, that was it.
All right, I'll get back to him then, let him know. And we should take that sign off the street too. Since it's not a designated alley in Portview, better get a name off of it.
Oh, why's the name on it?
It's been there, yeah.
Yeah, so it might be named that, it's just that it's private. So I don't know. Patty, what's your answer on that? Um, it's private. We determined that years ago, but there is a sign up that says Garfield Alley. Should the sign be pulled down or not, or what?
I would take it down.
Okay.
If it's a street sign that the borough uses, it certainly would signify that it's a public road.
It's one of our street signs, yes.
Right.
They could put up their own sign to say private or whatever they want.
Right, yeah, okay.
It's the same private road, you know?
All right, but it is only one lane.
If, if we don't, if we don't do Hamilton Crossing, it's the same basic thing. It's a private road.
Right. If there's a name on Hamilton, we should take that off too.
Patty, should we pull that one down too?
You know, actually, guys, you know, if, if, if we put the sign up, it, it would indicate that it's a public road.
Right.
They're not directional signs. They're identification signs.
Right.
So, you know, Hamilton and maybe this are known to be that, but I would rather not have the borough sign on it.
Well, it might have been up for mailing and mail, and people to come to UPS people just to give them a mark, and we take it down.
No, take it down, take it down.
Okay, here's the thing. Hey, Hamilton Crossing is, is the main, is their road. Where Garfield Alley is basically not their addresses, it's behind their houses.
Working back in.
Let me, let me tell you how much we need to show you.
Okay, Dawn, yeah.
Sign up that says Hamilton Crossing, but you have to say private on it.
Yeah, P V T, P V T.
P V T.
I've seen them everywhere.
Yeah, they have them in Christie Park and up in, off of Lincoln Way.
So Bobby, you can leave Garfield Alley then, I guess, and Hamilton, get, get a little thing, sticker that says P V T on it.
Okay.
Is that what you're saying, Dawn?
Yes, yeah.
That, that's good.
All right. Cause you want to keep it marked if you can for the UPS and the thing and.
They don't deliver back there. They don't.
An ambulance comes or something.
Yeah, but I don't know. Ambulance, yeah.
I don't know what the fuck.
An ambulance can get back out of there.
No, I know, but I'm just saying it could stop there if they say the name, but whatever. Okay, what else, Ken?
Uh, what else do I have? Hold on.
Anything from COG?
We haven't had a meeting in July and August, so. It'll start in September again.
Not even a Zoom meeting, huh?
Probably, I don't know, I haven't talked to her. Well, I had a couple of things here. Oh, we do have a junior councilperson. Yes, Rebecca. Rebecca, you there?
Hi.
Okay.
Hi, Rebecca.
Hi.
Congratulations. Did you turn in your biography and your picture yet, Melissa?
I did, yes.
You did?
On Monday.
She's on the ball.
I wish I would have had. I could have read it tonight, but I don't have it. So maybe Melissa has it.
I didn't want to bother you with that.
So, okay, we're set. So welcome. And if you have any questions, I gave you my card and you can, you're more than welcome to ask anything you want to anybody, so. We welcome you. Have fun.
Anything else, Ken?
No, I'll probably think of it after, but.
That's all right. You come back in. How about we go to Debbie?
Wow, that aren't like phone switches.
Um, you know what? Can I save my stuff for the meeting?
Sure.
Brush your teeth.
No. Just for the meeting, so everybody can hear what I'm saying.
All right, so how about we go to, um, cause we gotta start at seven o'clock. Let's end up here. Let's go to Bobby. Bobby, you got anything? We got six minutes left.
Well, I'll save my, my garbage collections for the meeting too, but as far as the public works, the, the gutter on the garage in the backside was completed. We're waiting on him to get me an invoice to do the front gutter because it was supposed to be repaired so I could paint the front of the garage. And all the wood behind the gutters rotted out, so that needs replaced. So he, Mark's supposed to get me a price on that and a invoice.
We got, yeah, we got one price already.
Yeah, and we had some repairs done on the Kubota. Uh, the front drive shaft for the mower deck was, uh, broken. So that was like a five hundred some dollar drive shaft or, you know, the total repairs were about six hundred bucks, something like that. And we're gonna start, we, we've already started doing some line painting. We did row mine from uh, Gumberd all the way down to the slip. Now, we, we're gonna get on the crosswalks, get on the stop signs, lines and all that. That'll be coming up, uh, probably in the next week or so.
Okay, well, am I okay though? I'm live. Can you? Can you actually?
Okay, Melissa, we can hear you again. Talk quietly or unmute yourself.
Unmute it, yeah, mute yourself.
Okay, go ahead, Bob.
And then that water issue that Dawn was talking about on Dursen, four oh four Dursen, it seems to have been resolved because I don't see any water, maybe a little trickle, but it's basically on, on his property. Uh, nothing running down the street like it was. And it looked like they did a pretty good job at doing that.
Is that down past Greg's house on the right?
Yeah.
Okay, Dawn, you know that one you were talking about, looks, Bobby's trying to say he thinks.
I hear him, I heard him, yeah. I'll, I'll check with the engineer and find out what he did.
Okay.
It looks like, it looks like they dug something down inside their driveway and put a pipe down into like a pit. And it, 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 nothing's out on the street.
That's good. Okay, what else, Bobby?
Bobby.
Uh, that, that's, that's it for now. Like I said, I'll save the garbage reports for the regular meeting.
Okay, we'll go to Greg next. Greg? Are you there? Okay, Greg must have.
We lost him.
I'm here, Mark. I can do something real quick.
Go ahead, Doug.
Hey, Patty, motion number twenty-four on that, on the agenda. I'll obviously have to amend that, correct?
Yes.
Just read the, the other ones, not the Johnson, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, and then Melissa wrote me a note about, uh, to do, doing motion was not on the, um, on the agenda for clearances and public hearings for September for five other properties. Um, I'm assuming I should make that motion too for fourteen eighty-three Romine, eighteen eighteen Tacoma. It's basically just the next round, the ones we've been talking about, guys.
Okay, yeah, that, that is correct, yes.
I think you're familiar with that, Patty, too?
Yes.
Glen Avenue, Barclay, Norwood, some other, this is the next round of demos we've been talking about.
Okay.
And I believe those were on that, um, we put that in for a grant, actually.
Okay, you know what, Doug? So, I don't want to get too far ahead of what would be an actual demolition date.
So why don't we, wanna wait on it?
I, I think so, because when I do this, I do title searches and if we wait a year, it's just too long.
Yeah, like I said before, we're always, we're, we're always, we gotta get some things wrapped up before we start going more. I'll, I'll hold off on that then. Okay. That's all right. Thanks, thanks, Mark.
Okay, all right, next up, moving next up, we get everybody except the mayor and Dave.
Mark, I have a question.
Yes.
Can I ask Patty something again?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, we don't have any personnel motions. We have to wait on that.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna wait until September meeting. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Next we'll go, how about the mayor? Did I, I don't think I missed anybody else on council, mayor and Dave? I just got one question. The youth group that used to meet on Wednesday nights, they were asking me if they're twenty-five and under, when can they start using the borough building again? Twenty, twenty-five and under? Melissa, you have any thoughts on that?
Well, they're limited to groups of under twenty-five.
Right. I don't, I don't think they have that much.
That's the age, that's the age, twenty-five and under.
No, I.
I don't know, it's population's twenty-five and under.
The attendance.
Attendance, there you go.
If it was twenty-five and under, I'd be an attendance.
So I think, I think what comes into, I think what we have to consider is the cleaning, the deep cleaning that needs to be done.
This will work well. All right, put it back on.
And then, then I have other groups that are gonna want to get in too, so we would have to pay John to be able to deep clean. I'm sorry.
Should we tell them to hang off for a while then?
I think we hold off for a little while.
Well, I'd like to have a September meeting down there.
Yeah, well, we'll see, whatever everybody wants.
Bobby has a good plan, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a thought. We'll see where the COVID is. Okay, and then the chief has a, a couple of things rather than us duplicate ourselves. I'm gonna let him bring them up. Hi, guys, thank you. Hey, the first, the first thing I wanted to go over with, um, on July fourteenth, we had a state police audit for our police department. Uh, was here for about two and a half hours with, uh, with the state police. We met, um, all of our, uh, legal paperwork and privileges for cleaning N C I C. So we're good to go as far as PSP, as far as all, all of our legal. Okay, I'm gonna go into our staffing a little bit. Um, I'm sure you guys have seen all the overtime and the issues we've had with staffing again. So I would like to, again, request that we advertise for the hiring of two part-time officers, the sooner the better. Um, because we have several people on leave of absences right now. Uh, including Ray Shore is gonna be gone for a while with that.
Dawn, I have you on speaker.
Leanne Dimmuzio is gonna be off until August, or, uh, August twenty-third. And we still have a couple that are very limited right now of when they could come here and work. So, um, that's why you're finding me working a lot of extra shifts and Chris Adams. And I do want to throw this out there and give a big thanks to Chris Adams, uh, for really pulling his weight and coming through. Because he's been taking a lot of the shifts that I would have been getting stuck with, or I don't know who would have been working. So I wanna just give a kudos out to him for stepping up. Okay, Dave, hold up on that one second. So Kenny, can we put a motion, you make a motion tonight to do this and hire part-time applications?
What do you want, two or three?
Um, right, as many as you can get. I would go two, two or three, because you know, that's gonna be filtered out and, you know, a- again, the part-time officers, you know, it's just a Band-Aid, guys. Okay, cause they're still limited to what they could work. And that was gonna lead me into my next, my next issue that if the borough would reconsider or consider hiring another full-time officer, uh, for the month of January. If it's something we could deal with for November's budget meeting and get civil service moving. I think this is really the only true fix we have is to add one more full-time officer to this staff. So I would like the borough to, the council to consider that action again as well. Okay, well, we'll look into that, Dave, and see what we, we can do, all right? Why don't, why don't we just advertise for police and not say how many, and then get the applications and then decide how many we need to fit?
I agree.
Right. All right, Ken, you make the motion and somebody second it. All right, what else, Dave? Anything else? Um, that's all I have on mine.
It's seven o'clock, Ken. Um, when you make that motion, it is part-time police.
Right.
Right.
Okay, not, not just generally police. It's got to be part-time.
Part-time. Okay. All right, Bobby, unmute your, unmute your phone for the trains.
Okay, we did.
I lost everybody.
I like the sound.
Comcast went down. That was the issue, but I'm still, I'm still live and we're still live and we're, we're forging ahead. It has come back up. John's working behind the scenes, so with my computer, but we're still okay because I'm using the phone.
Well, my volume's real low now.
Okay.
Um, it's a minute after seven.
Okay. So let's go Patty and Melissa. Do you want to start the next part of the meeting?
Okay. Everybody ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, this is the date and time set for public hearings on properties that have been identified as blighted and unsafe. Um, we have four properties on tonight's demolition list. Um, they are seventeen twenty-one Johnson, seventeen nineteen Johnson, seventeen twenty-six Row Mine and seventeen twenty-six Row Mine Rear. Um, hearing notices were mailed to all owners in July by way of certified and regular mail. Um, all taxing bodies and anybody with an interest in the property also received a notice. The public hearings were advertised in the Mon Valley Independent on July eighteenth, twenty twenty. All properties were posted and mailing addresses were obtained uh, via the Allegheny County, uh, assessment website, tax bill, bill mailing, mailing. Um, the first two properties, seventeen twenty-one Johnson and seventeen nineteen Johnson, um, we're going to have to put on hold, uh, the owner, Donald L. Rudberg is in bankruptcy. And the bankruptcy imposes an automatic stay on any enforcement proceedings. Um, I have advised at council that it is possible to file a petition with the uh, bankruptcy court and request relief from the stay of the bankruptcy code on the basis that these properties, uh, present a public safety and health hazard. Um, so I will do that. So for the time being, we will suspend the hearings on those two properties. Does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, then we're going to move on to seventeen twenty-six Row Mine, block and lot four sixty-five A two forty-five. The record title owner is Brooks Enterprises. Uh, the mail was sent to the property into the taxpayer address. The certified mail was returned as undeliverable. Um, an attempted delivery was made at the taxpayer address. Uh, the post office left a note for the property owner that a certified mail was waiting for them and they would have, uh, until August to pick it up. But, um, at this point, we, um, uh, we, we know that the letters that were sent were addressed to the, the proper party. Um, and so, um, is uh, Melissa, have we received correspondence from the property owner at seventeen twenty-six Row Mine?
No.
Okay. Um, Don, Don Glenn is here this evening. Is he able to provide testimony with regard to the condition of seventeen twenty-six Row Mine?
Yes.
If you would, Don?
Okay. The seventeen twenty-six Row Mine, uh, it's a two-story siding building. And, uh, based on the recommendation of the building inspector, uh, the building is not habitable. It's been vacated. It's been abandoned. And there are no utilities connected to the building. Uh, it's a fire hazard. And it's in close proximity to other buildings, to adjacent property. It would cause damage if it were to catch on fire. There's Roman, uh, rodent infestation. And there is health, is a health hazard due to the fact that there's mold and mildew and unsanitary conditions in the building. This property, in my opinion, is, is considered a high priority. It's a blighted property. It should be condemned and demolished.
Don, um, could I ask, i- is this property currently vacant?
Yes.
Okay. In, in your professional opinion, is it uninhabitable?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Does council have any questions of Don Glenn or me with regard to seventeen twenty-six Row Mine?
Was it true that, um, there was no, I mean, we had no correspondence from them?
I, the correspondence received was on the next property.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay, no questions.
Okay, if there are no questions, we'll close the public hearing on the condemnation of seventeen twenty-six Row Mine.
All right.
Our next hearing is on seventeen twenty-six Row Mine Rear, Lawton Block four sixty-five A two four seven. Uh, the record title owner is Raquel Lugo. Um, the property, um, notice of tonight's hearing was sent to the property and to take the taxpayer address. Um, and a letter was delivered on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. Uh, Don, are you able to provide a report with regard to the condition of this property?
Yes, I am. Yes, I have one.
Okay, if you would.
Uh, you do have correspondence from attorney, uh, Stephen Levowitz on this property. So I've prepared a report in rebuttal to his letter and I would like that to be made part of the record because his letter will also be part of the record. So I need to make a rebuttal and make that part of the record.
Um, Don, I, I, I'm gonna, um, I'm going to read that letter. Um, so, so every, it becomes part of the record and then Don can respond.
Right.
Uh, dear Ms. McGrail, please be advised that this office represents Julio Espinoza with regard to the, the above action. Uh, this letter and its attachments will serve as our comments and objections for the proposed demolition to be discussed at the hearing. Due to the pandemic, we will not be able to appear at the scheduled public hearing uh, for Wednesday, August fifth at seven. I am attaching a copy, copy of my client's August second, twenty twenty email sent to you. Where, uh, he described the property. In addition, I am attaching several pictures for your review as well as the plot plan from the Allegheny County Assessment website. It is our contention as set forth in Mr. Espinoza's email that the damage and problems associated with this property are due to the shifting of the retaining wall, which is identified as borough property and not my clients. I'm attaching various photos taken by my client showing interior damage caused by the, the street retaining wall pushing against the house wall. I am also including the emails to and from McLean Engineering that investigated the retaining wall issue and advised that they could not stabilize my client's property without work being done on the exterior street retaining wall. My client advises that he personally told the manager of Portview Borough about this problem in approximately two thousand and eight. Do not hesitate to contact me if you have any questions concerning above. Hopefully time will permit us to discuss this matter. Um, the, the email that Mr. Espinoza sent, I, I'm sorry, it takes time to read through it. But hello, my name is Julio Espinoza, co-owner and legal guardian of the property. In subject, dear McGrail, please herein find a brief description of our side allegation regarding the matter. In two thousand and four, this property was purchased with the intention to rehab and rent for retirement plans. Side income. In two thousand and six, I moved from Florida to Portview to rehab the property, clean up and suit to work. A large amount of old furniture and debris were removed from property and moldy walls removed, finding stress cracks on the house foundation back wall. In order to insure the property, an insurance, insurance inspector visited the property denying coverage due to a backstreet named Dover Alley. Ground retaining wall integrity was compromised with substantial cracks on the street retaining wall shifted and leaning toward the house foundation wall. I visited the city office and communicate the issue expecting them to repair or correct the street grounds retaining wall. I was told there's nothing they could do about it. I was very disappointed, but I didn't lose the hope to get it fixed even on my own expenses. In two thousand and thirteen, after gathering needed funds, I moved to Portview. I rented a nearby house and moved in to start the project. At this point, the street retaining wall was partially collapsed inside the property limits. I secured the house foundation wall with wood studs to keep the street wall from completely collapsing inside the property. I called the excavating safety number. They came and marked the street with all the lines that runs underground on Dover Alley boundary to my foundation wall. I called local contractors. Estimates on said task all coming to the same conclusions. They cannot work on my property, not safe until Dover Alley grounds retaining wall gets corrected since there is gas pipes, total water main sewage and drainage running along the street underground boundary to my foundation wall. Wish could result on the collapse of the street if my foundation wall is removed, causing the rupture of aged pipes. In this situation, this situation has generated on my side a considerable amount of expenses and loss on travel in order to comply with city code violation complaints and fines, not mentioning nearly to a one hundred fifty thousand dollars in loss of use directly related to the city. Actions by neglecting or overlooking the proper maintenance of the street and roads of the city of Portview for the safety and residents' commonwealth. All this years, I have been keeping the property in the best possible way, tidy and properly arranged. I pay every month a maintenance contractor to inspect and cut the vegetation, spray for bugs and rodents. I had travel and several occasions to remove nearby neighbors littering and landlords allowing their tenants to trespass and use the property as they backyard storage. In one occasion, even having to go and reference the property after under the approval and supervision of a lady named Deanne. Her tenants removed the fence and using the property yard as lawn mowing equipments, repair facility and shortcut alley to their rent. It has been very difficult for me to deal with the neighbor's bad behavior and shallow manners, but I never press charges even having witnesses because I'm a person of dialogue and peace. I have been under various attacks after I referenced the yard, all kinds of unsupported complaints from the city. I guess generated by retaliating Deanne that have been influencing a state of opinions in town. I truly, or strike that, I really appreciate your letter advising such arbitrary intention of demolition, which I found unsupported. At this moment, and for the records, I'm not seeking restitution of any kind from Portview since I'm a part of it somehow. I just need for the officials to understand that they need to do their part in order for me to be able to fix the property. I am seeking for a law firm representation in case your client decides to go on with such a waste of money and energy when they can use it instead to secure the streets of the city. Please, if there is anything I could do to cooperate before litigation, don't hesitate to contact me at his number. My most respectful regards, Julio Espinoza. So, Don, if you could respond to that?
Sure. Okay, uh, I begin my report by saying references made to attorney Stephen H. Levowitz's letter of August the fourth, two thousand and twenty, relative to the reference subject, which is seventeen twenty-six Row Mine Rear. It is his contention as set forth in Mr. Espazi, Espinato's correspondence of August two, two thousand and twenty, that the damage and problem, those problems associated with Mr. Espinoza's property are due to the shifting of the retaining wall, which is identified as borough property and not my clients. Now, I begin my report by saying, please be informed, I made an onsite inspection on August the fourth, two thousand and twenty, and following are my findings. One, Dover Alley at the rear of seventeen twenty-six Row Mine is a twenty-foot public alley. Two, enclosed are photographs, one, two, and three, which show a wooden utility pole which on, which is on the dividing line of public versus private property lines. Three, the, can everyone still hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, three, the retaining wall is approximately three feet beyond this dividing line within private property. See photograph number one. Four, this retaining wall is in line with the foundation of the adjacent structure. See photograph number two. Five, it is clear that this wall was constructed as a necessity to retain the earth when an excavation was made to construct a foundation for seventeen twenty-six Row Mine Rear. Six, the borough would never construct a wall on private property. Seven, this wall was not constructed to meet borough's accepted design standards. Eight, Mr. Espinoza's report of August two, two thousand and twenty acknowledges this retaining wall was partially collapsed inside the property limits, private property. That's because this wall is constructed within proper, private property. In conclusion, it is my professional opinion, the retaining wall referred to in attorney Stephen H. Levowitz's correspondence of August four, two thousand and twenty, is not a borough constructed, owned, nor maintained retaining wall. Signed, Donald M. Glenn, P E Borough Engineer. Now, in conjunction with that report, I did notice I have some other items here. The, the rear porch is of that building is unsafe. The steps to the second level missing, the second level are missing. And that, uh, step area is unsafe. And there are problems with the right side foundation and the left brick wall not being, uh, totally sound. That completes my report. It's, oh, no, it doesn't. It's my professional opinion that, uh, this property should be condemned and demolished if the property owner does not maintain or repair it.
Is it currently vacant property?
Yes, it is. And by the way, I didn't include, the building inspector includes it as a fire hazard. Close proximity to causing danger to adjacent property. Possibility of structural collapse, which I refer to with foundations. And it's rodent infested and it's a health hazard with mold, unsanitary conditions. Now that completes my report.
Okay, and, um, so, so, Don, the, the proper party to repair this wall would be the, the current property owner?
That is correct.
Okay.
In fact, we, we cannot trespass onto private property. We can't use public money to repair fi- uh, private walls.
Right. Okay. Do, do any members of council have any questions with regard to that property?
No.
None, none.
Um, well, that, that will end our public hearing on the four properties that we were scheduled for this evening. Action can be taken at our public meeting with regard to the condemnation and demolition of, of the str- the two structures that will not be on hold.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Melissa, you there?
I'm here.
Okay. So we're done with?
We do have.
I can't hear Melissa.
I can't either.
We have.
We lost you again.
We can't hear you, Melissa.
You can't hear me?
Nope.
Now we can.
Go ahead, keep talking.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, so we have a few minutes before we go into the regular council meeting. I can give, uh, my report since I was kind of busting with the, um, Comcast and the, the internet there, trying to get the computer back up. It, we are back up. The internet is backed up, but I did lose what I was doing on the computer, but we are live. So, um, my report for this evening, I wanted to report on a few things. Our depository, I was informed by, um, First Commonwealth Bank, Earl Martin with the treasury, uh, First Commonwealth Bank. Our depository will be consolidating to the White Oak office. That's going to take place, December eleventh will be the last day for the McKeesport office. So they have offered some things such as remote capture, virtual depositing. I'll be meeting with him to go over those things with him. And I will pass that information along to council as I get it. So right now, um, we're still doing business down in McKeesport and in White Oak because it's easier sometimes just to do the drive-through at White Oak than to. because it's easier sometimes just to do the drive through at White Oak than to go to McKeesport. For me, I just kinda catch it on my way home.
Yes.
Yeah, that's on your way home, okay.
Yes. Um, currently I'm working with the county and the COVID cares act for funding. So some federal monies came down through the state and the county that's now available for municipality. So we are working on that.
I got a question. Can I have a question?
Go ahead.
Did the fireman turn in anything to you, Melissa? Cause I saw there was something out on the PSAB magazine this month about uh grants for COVID reimbursement to fire companies and EMSs. So they're involved with us then, right?
No, um, the fire company has to do their own. Anyone that has their own EIN, ten EIN, they have to go after that.
Well, the way it looks is a, it's a Pennsylvania thing, I think. So we have to talk to them. I'll have to get ahold of Brandon.
Yeah, I gave him the information that I got from the, from the county.
Okay.
So he was aware and um he was going, I know that they, he said that there were some other things that they were doing.
Okay.
Okay, then I had a request from Larry Griffin, food service director at South Allegheny School District. Um, he was asking about an area for them to use to do grab and go lunches. That's gonna be for the kids because if they get the hybrid plan in place, it sounds like the Portview kids will be in school Monday and Tuesday. So Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, they will not be in school. So they would like to still be able to provide them lunches. So we did say that we would give them a couple of parking spots. Right now, not knowing the status of Pennsylvania American Water and the construction schedule that we're gonna have with um the grinder pump that they are gonna be putting in, we can always use the parking lot at the police department.
Yeah.
I just wanna be sure our kids are safe when they get these lunches. So um if they, if the, if they're not intending on construction, we'll put them down by the pavilion. And that's even easier and safer. But if not, we can still use Ro mine up here, right? It's a police department.
All right, everybody good with that? Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Go ahead, Melissa.
Okay, we put out an RFP for auditing services. Those are due back August fourteenth. Um, okay. Uh, update on the pension fund.
Uh, one more thing. How long have we been with this current auditing company?
Um, we, this is their third year that they'll be doing.
All right. Remember we discussed, we wanna mix it up every so many years. I just wanted to say.
That's why we're doing an RFP.
Okay. Thank you. No problem.
So actually, Kim Turnley said they still have one year. So we have it out there. They'll do twenty twenty, but then we still have twenty one and twenty two that we'll be looking for. So the request for proposals went out to some very lucrative firms.
Good, all right.
Um, up, up, you're welcome. Update on the pension fund uh through Huntington. I had a call from Lori Henderson. Um, pre-COVID, we were at a loss of eighty six thousand dollars. Today, we recovered that and then some. We're in a really good position. She will keep us updated and our bounce back was positive. So over twenty thousand dollars.
Good.
So.
Mark gets rolling.
We're doing really good. Lori's keeping an eye on things and she'll keep us abreast of any changes or anything that we need to do. As far as the MMO calculations, I completed those and sent them over to Mock and Hop. That's the actuary for the pension. Uh, Dawn did speak about this, but the Glen Avenue embankment project was not funded. That was part of his report. And then it looks like the new CDBG rounds, um, we just got the applications, I think yesterday, came in an email. So we'll, we'll wanna look at, you know, what projects you guys would like to.
Yeah, Dawn, Dawn discussed some of them. He'll give his recommendations and then administration and council will make sure we're good with them.
And, um, you know, the CDBG projects are all income driven, just as a reminder.
Right.
All right, bless you, Donnie.
And then we have, um, two contracts that are gonna be coming up here pretty soon. So we should be starting negotiations sometime in the fall or so.
Did we get anything from Public Works? At least that letter said it'd be in a couple of days and it's been about a week.
We haven't gotten any wish lists.
All right. Let me know when that comes in. Thank you.
All right, anything else, Melissa?
End of report. Thank you.
Okay, it's seven twenty six. We start our meeting at seven thirty. So I don't know if anybody has nothing else, maybe take a couple minute break in case you have to use the restroom or whatever, get a drink.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks.
All right. Okay, Melissa, you let us know when we're ready. I'm gonna take a quick break, check on my dad.
We will.
Check on your dad, thank you. Gotta get my water.
I don't know what you're telling me, Don, the left side, the right side of my neck. This window is the meeting. A quickie's hearing is done. We can't go off because.
Hey Rebecca, you still there? Hello? Hey Brian, I'm the mayor.
You?
Is Rebecca still there?
Yes.
Um, what was I gonna ask her? Forget now. Oh, darn. Hey, you know, you can make reports on what's going on in the school district. We encourage that. So uh you got anything in clubs and stuff going on, any fundraisers if they do do that, you know, in the future. You can report on all that stuff for the high school and so whatever you know about it. So, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. And you have to be the Easter bunny, by the way. She's always good. Is she good with that?
She's always, yes, not a problem.
Yeah, we need about four hundred Easter eggs died too. So don't forget that.
Okay, well, I think we're, I think we're okay. What time is it?
Okay, Melissa.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Good job.
It's, uh, I have seven thirty. How about everybody else?
Is Marky back? Wait till Marky gets back.
Okay.
Check on his dad.
Hey, Melissa.
Hi Patty.
Hi, did you see? What's, why are you laughing, Ken?
It is the way she said that, like you've been gone, you know?
Hey Melissa, did you get my text?
Um.
Did you look at my text?
Yes, 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 yes. Yes.
Yes. Is that a yes?
It's a yes.
Okay.
Did we lose Mark?
Yeah, yeah, that's. Yeah, he'll be back.
I thought I saw you with three of these, Mayor. I couldn't find the third.
Okay.
He's back. Okay.
Sorry, I had to give him some medicine.
All right, we figured. No problem.
All right.
Melissa.
Ready, Melissa?
Yeah, you can call the meeting to order.
Okay, Portview Borough called to order. Do the pledge of allegiance.
I'd be in the United States or in a.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Janeco.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Hello.
I think, I think Greg may have dropped out of the meeting.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mr. Haresco.
Here.
Mr. Torterius.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Bettors.
Here.
Also in attendance this evening, we have Mayor Brian Heranix, Solicitor Patricia McGrail, Borough Engineer Dawn Glenn, Chief of Police David Petruski, our junior council, our new junior council person, Rebecca Matlos, myself, the borough manager, Melissa McGlory. And President, I think we have a quorum.
Yay.
Okay.
Should I swear Rebecca in now?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you that. Let's do it after. What's the next thing? Hold on.
Approval of.
Number four.
Well, she's on number four, so not yet.
Right.
Let's go to number two on the agenda. It proved minutes for the regular meeting on June third, twenty twenty at seven thirty. Council, what's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Douggy, second by Kenny. All in favor, say aye. Aye, nays, ayes, have it so ordered. Okay, number three. On announcers, an executive session was held to discuss personnel issues. Okay, now we'll go to number four, Ken.
Yes, I'd just like to introduce our new junior council person. I think she's number fifteen. So it's pretty good for us. So.
Wow.
It's been a long time and Melissa, do you have her bio in front of you?
Um. One second.
I meant to ask you that this afternoon and I forgot.
Give me one second here to locate that and then I can read it.
Okay, well, let's, we were swearing in then while you're looking for that.
Okay, Mayor, you wanna swear Rebecca in?
Sure.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I Rebecca.
Do solemnly pledge.
Do solemnly pledge.
That I accept the position.
That I accept the position.
Of Portview Junior Councilperson.
Of Portview Junior Councilperson.
I promise to attend monthly council meetings.
I promise to attend monthly council meetings.
Observe Borough Council meeting rules.
Observe Borough Council meeting rules.
And actively participate in Borough business.
And actively participate in Borough business.
I understand that I cannot vote.
I understand that I cannot vote.
On any issue.
On any issue.
And I cannot attend executive sessions.
And I cannot attend executive sessions.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Congratulations Rebecca and welcome aboard. And if you have any thoughts or need anything or questions, like Kenny said, you can call him. He's the guy that's been in charge of the program from the beginning. And also you can call, of course, anybody on council, the mayor or um, Melissa, who's our borough manager. She can help you a lot too. All right? Anything you'd like to say to get started or you're good right now? Yeah, what's going on with school with you guys? Are you just gonna go back or just a couple of days or they haven't figured it out?
Well, at the beginning, they sent out an email and they said that if we were in the green phase and we would go back full time, just with just with masks, but all the other schools are doing two days a week. So I think we're gonna do two days a week also.
Okay, all right. Well, everything works out and we just need to get over the virus. That's all. But be safe and wear your mask.
Okay, what I thought that was submitted from Rebecca uh this week was just the actual paperwork that was filled out that I would send over to the PSAB. And Rebecca is the cheerleading captain. Um, she attends still set for cosmetology. Uh, she's active with the Girl Council, Junior Campaign, leading in training. Um, she has bronze and silver award recipients working towards gold. Uh, graduation plans, barber school and college. And she wants to gain knowledge and experience in local government and activities. Welcome Rebecca.
Thank you.
Did you say barber school? Can I be your first patient?
Oh, you have to have hair, Rebecca. I can't fix people with no hair.
I just might put hard straighten that.
Oh, okay. Well, congratulations Rebecca and welcome aboard. All right. Okay, at this next stage, we'll listen to comments from our citizens. And Melissa, what do you have there?
Okay, so, um, we've had some issues regarding a cat up on Burr Bridge. And where our animal control came in.
Melissa.
Are you, um, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Okay, so the animal control came in. Yeah, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
I can, Mark can.
Gotcha.
I can hear you.
Okay, go ahead. I can hear you now. I lost.
Okay.
That mine too did that.
So we all get these crazy tech, technical difficulties. Thank you for being so patient, everyone. So we've had some issues regarding a cat that was attacked by a rabid raccoon in the Burr Bridge area. So several residents have asked for the trap neuter and release program to be put into effect. Um, I have a Jason Selyon from seven fifteen Burbage, Burr Bridge. He's requesting to start the trap neuter and release cap program due to the rabid raccoon biting the cat up there. Um, we also have Amy Templeton from seventeen eighteen Burr Bridge stating her concern over the rabid cat and the abundance of feral cats in that direct area. She asked if the borough could proceed with the trap neuter and release program. I have Linda Martinak from seven twenty four Burr Bridge. She requested the trap neuter and release program and also how, how else the borough can address this issue. I have a Jean Check, seven sixteen Burr Bridge. She expressed her concern, concern over the number of stray cats and kittens in that area. She's also asking for council to consider the trap neuter and release program. So I'll let council weigh in on this.
Okay, uh, I talked to our contact for this program who tries to set up a schedule for us.
What's her name?
Uh, it is Donna Chrislap. She's the one, she's the one who does the trapping. Then they hire somebody to do the spade and neutering. They bring out a portable hospital in at the borough building and do the whole spiel with them and that. But it's kinda tough at the end of the year because they're pretty booked up. She's gonna try to see if anybody has any openings at all, but she doubts it. Cause she's working on that currently. And as per the rabbit problem up there with, uh, I guess the raccoon. Did we not get a notice from Allegheny County about baiting and trapping or baiting these raccoons?
That's gonna be tonight, thirty first, August tenth.
Yes, the police got it and we got it.
Okay, so at least we can put that up in that area. But that's what I was told. If there's a rabid raccoon, they do not live long once they get the rabies. So it's probably already deceased, whatever it was. So. But we will be trying and we're gonna set, try to set up a whole borough wide one end of April, end of March, beginning of April, before they start the breeding season. To get them caught, neutered, spayed, get their ears clipped. And so you know, when you see a stray cat, look for one of its ear tips to be clipped off. That lets you know that that's an international sign that they've been fixed. So.
Usually the right ear.
Usually the right ear, okay.
And you said it would be maybe sooner if possible, correct?
She's gonna try, but like I said, they're, they book up in, they start scheduling in December and January for the following year. And there's several companies that do this. And so she's gonna put her nose into it and you'll see if she can get something going for us. So.
All right.
So if you have a problem in your area, let the borough know and then we can direct these people where to set the traps come April and March and April. So we're working on that, people. So but let us know what a problem. I haven't heard anything from Portsmouth. But let us know where the problem. I haven't heard anything from Portsmouth. Have you heard anything up here, Melissa?
No, I did get a call about Elmwood, somebody feeding lots of cats down there.
Yeah, but we had that checked out, right? That was up. Somebody went up and checked it the other day?
Yes, Officer Adams.
Right, okay. So we have to inform these people about not putting food out for all these cats, and let them sit out there. That does entice other animals like raccoons and everything, so you don't want to let, leave it out on your porch. Feed it if you do, but don't leave it out on your porch. Other than that, that's our report for the cat block.
Thanks, Ken.
Alright, thank you.
I have a few more citizens to be heard. I have Steve Hasvazdick, 807 Burbidge Street. He's with, he is the Chair of the Portview Citizens Committee. He asked about having yard sales during the pandemic.
Well, I got a little point on that. I have spoken to somebody up Methodist Church. They have an annual, I guess, spring and fall one, and they're planning one for September 12th. And I know Steve, if we're gonna do it, usually tries to do it in conjunction with that, so it's a better, you know, community-wide yard sale, so.
Yeah, I would say if it's a yard sale and they want to have it, honestly, a problem with it, they just have to go by the rules to try to, you know, whatever the distance and mask wearing.
Well, we just had a garage sale with my neighbors this past two weekends, and they requested everybody wear, and they did. The people were very obliging. They all wore face masks and came, but it was very well taken. They did their thing, and then they left, so.
Okay, so is council okay with that, long as they follow the COVID rules and distance and mask wearing?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, okay, Melissa. You can tell them it's okay for that one. Next.
Melissa, make sure you let him know, if you get ahold of Steve, that September 12th would be a good date if he wants to do it that way.
That's in conjunction with the United Methodist Church, Ken?
Yes, yes, dear.
I could talk to him also. I see him all the time.
Because they asked, the one lady.
I'll take care of it, Melissa.
Thank you.
I'll let them know up there that they're gonna try to do September 12th. Alright.
Okay, my, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Okay, next citizen to be heard is Annette Sobchak, Trimble Avenue, regarding the deteriorating conditions of 1726 Front and Rear Row Mine, along with the rodent issues. She also wants to inform council of the deteriorating Dover Alley, and asked if there was anything that we could do there. And she also wanted to thank council and Mr. Lombardo in her email that, for paving Trimble. And she was very thankful for that.
Okay, well, the response, I think, to that one is the 1726 Front and Rear was just dealt with on demolitions. So council will act on that, and then you can let her know that. And then as for the Dover Alley, we'll let the street department look at it. And, you know, there's a lot of alleys that people want paved, and we did a few. They started a program this year, Greg, and the council, so they're gonna continue that, but we will have the street committee look at that, alright?
Okay, so, you know, just to be clear, I would like to read her whole email here.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this email is in regards to issues that need addressed in the upcoming council meeting. And she talked about the demolition, 1726 Front and Rear. And over the past few years, the the structure has fallen off and continued to fall. Numerous animals, she said, groundhog, skunks, rats, raccoons have been frequently seen in the yard. For the safety of the children who walk past these structures, for the school bus and the other residents, it would be in the best interest of Borough Council to pursue demolition. Mr. Lombardo was advised of the properties in the fall of 2019, and viewed the structures at that time, and then she thanked Mr. Lombardo for the paving of Trimble. Just advising the borough, the recent rainstorms have been washing away the 1700 block of readdress having the 1700 block of Dover paved, as other alleys have been recently paved. Thank you in advance, Annette and Jacqueline Uritich.
Okay, I think we handled that one. Next, Melissa, next.
Okay, I have, his name is John Friend, and he lives at 903 Rebecca Street. I would like to read you his letter. My mother is Ann Fox. She is 81 years old and suffering from severe dementia. As you can see from the photo, that's the photo. I don't know.
It's hard to even compare what that is, yeah.
Go ahead.
As you can see from the photo, her access to her home is very limited when she's having health issues. We have trouble using the alley behind her house, that's Garfield Street, due to people parking there. Could we have a no parking sign placed at the beginning of the alley? That is a no parking area anyway. Thank you, John Friend.
Okay, and like I reported earlier during our regular session, I talked to the brother, his name's Ross, and what he would like to do, if it's possible, to get a handicap zone in front of his his house. So he's living with his mother now, because she's very, you know, she needs help, care. And I told him to put in an application to submit for the handicap zone, just so the ambulance and that could get in there. But like we discussed, the alley behind it, it is not our alley. We really can't do anything with that. So we're just gonna mark it as being a private alley, and it doesn't belong to the borough, so. And he's interested in looking at some other property by him, so we're gonna, he's gonna check into that. Maybe he can build a driveway up there if he gets the property, but I told him to come up and see you for the permit for the handicap zone, and then we'll go from there.
Alright, good. Alright, next, Melissa.
Okay, I have two more that I'm gonna turn over to the Solicitor Patricia McGrail, and this is in regards to 1212 Elmwood. That would be Jennifer Gunnel. She lives at 1,000 Lyle Avenue. And then we have a Kathy Detman. She resides at 937 Lyle Avenue. So Patty, I'm gonna turn these over to you now.
Okay, in no particular order, I'm gonna read the communication from Jen Gunnel, which we, Melissa received on July 23rd. "To the members of the Portview Borough Council, I live just a few doors away from the house on Elmwood that was bought by Sisters PGH. My husband and I have enjoyed living here for the last 11 years and raising our six-year-old daughter in this community. While I have no personal issues with the members of Sisters PGH or the people that they help, I am not in support of them establishing a group home in our neighborhood. Sisters PGH constantly posts articles of violence against their kind on the Facebook page and on their website. The average black trans woman lives to be 35, beauty committees to the side are being murdered. There are also multiple news articles stating that their previous facility was intentionally burnt down by their own tenant. According to the website for Project T, this house will welcome new tenants every three, six, or 12 months. With the revolving door of tenants, how can we be assured that our borough will remain safe? Will there be registered sex offenders? Will will there be background checks? Will there be security on site? Will there be extra police patrols? Will children have to worry about finding needles in the street while walking to their bus stop? Project T also advertises that this house is on a bus route. See attached it. When is the last time a Port Authority bus came through Portview? If they are posting untruthful information like this, what else would they lie about? I sincerely hope that these questions are taken into consideration, that the council is able to provide feedback during the next meeting. Thank you, Jennifer Gunnel. And again, this this is an email that we received from Ms. Gunnel, and I'm gonna try to go through it and respond to the questions as I am able.
Alright.
Okay, we obviously have no input in what Sisters PGS puts on their site, whether they describe violence, violence against their members, or anything else. Obviously, we don't give input on that. We treat that information as we treat any information on Facebook. You take it at face value, or, you know, you can do your own private investigation. It is our responsibility as Borough Council to enforce the requirements of our zoning ordinance. Ms. Gunnel indicates that, according to the website, there may be new tenants every three, six, or 12 months. Council did meet with Ciora Thompson, who is the Executive Director of Sisters PGH, as well as their attorney, who indicated at the time that the leases would be for one year, and that there may be different tenants that go in and out during that year. They indicated that each of the tenants is responsible for the payment of rent, and that, and that they, and that they acknowledge that there may be multiple tenants within that one-year period. The question, will there be registered sex offenders? Of course, we treat this property and its residents as we would any other new residents in the borough. There is a procedure that is followed with regard to sex offenders and the requirement that they be registered. Our Chief of Police might be able to speak to that procedure, but they would not be required to register, for example, with the Borough Manager, to that effect. Melissa, is Dave on? Is he able to?
Yeah, I'm here Patty.
Okay, if you would.
Yeah, I spoke with Melissa about this the other day. She inquired about it. And the proper procedure for that is, when somebody of that nature moves into a community, they are required to register with the Pennsylvania State Police, as far as paperwork, as being a Megan's Law offender. Okay, once they are registered with Pennsylvania State Police with their current address, the State Police will then notify our Police Department with a color photo and all the information on that offender. Okay, and those are strictly confidential. They stay in our office, and they are not for public dissemination of any type. They are for police knowledge only. So they are registered through the State Police, and then we get that record here, and that's where the information stops.
And Chief, that is true, no matter who who moves into the borough. So whether you're a member of of an organization that is renting a property or owns a property, the procedure is the same. There is no specific procedure that relates to transgender individuals, correct?
That's correct. It's for anybody like that, that would be a Megan's Law offender, yes.
One question that she asks, will there be security on site? To our knowledge, we have, there will not be security on site provided by Sisters PGH. There, will there be extra police patrols? There will not be extra police patrols simply because there is a home owned by Sisters PGH tenants. If there are problems at that location, just as there are problems, if there were problems anywhere throughout the borough, the police will respond to any call or concern made by neighbors or by residents of that particular property. Will children need to worry about finding needles in the street while walking to their bus stop? I'm not sure what that is in reference to. To be clear, this is neither a group home, nor is it a rehabilitation center. There is no greater chance that there will be needles found on the street in this location than there would be in any other location. The reference to the property being on a Port Authority bus stop, that we all know to be untrue. And Melissa and I have been in touch as recently as this afternoon with Sisters PGH, and so we will provide them with the information that there is no bus route that goes, that that takes a bus through that area. And correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, is there a Port Authority bus route in Portview at all?
Not that I'm aware of. We have the Heritage Bus.
We haven't had Port Authority in years.
In a number of years.
Yeah.
So we are, we will continue, we will continue to be in communication with the Executive Director of Sisters PGH, as well as the organization's lawyer, and will provide that information to them, so that they are advised properly. I did want, do want to confirm that this, the proposed use is not that of a group home, but rather, this this property is located in a residential B-zone, which is multifamily, but this is a single-family home. Under our ordinance, a family is defined as people that are related by blood or marriage, and they can reside in a single-family home. Unrelated people in not to exceed three are able to, are considered a household unit, or that can reside in a single-family home. And so the borough will be responsible for enforcing the terms of our ordinance. We also received, and that I believe those are all the questions that Jennifer Gunnel had posed.
Alright.
Does council want to weigh in on that at all?
Well, no, I think, I think you answered it Patty, and and and, like you said, they have to follow the same rules as everybody else. And they'll just be held to that standard to do that, that's all.
Yeah, very thorough answers Patty, thank you.
Yep.
We did receive another communication from a Kathy Detman on July 29th, 2020. Again, in email form to Melissa, and just to remind council, our advertisement for our monthly meeting indicates that you, if you have a public comment or questions, those are to be submitted to the Borough Manager electronically, and that that is what both Kathy Detman and Jennifer Gunnel have done. Kathy Detman's email, hello Melissa, there are many neighbors with questions. They have asked me to send their questions to be addressed at the council meeting. I would also like to warn you that there is talk of residents lining something at the Borough Building during the meeting. Why weren't Borough residents notified at the shelter? Borough knew in December and said they are just hearing about it. Sisters PGH misled the borough on occupancy permit. It has been said that tenants will sign a one-year lease. They are advertising three, six, nine, or 12 months. Borough says group home, but they are not following the rules of a group home. If they are a group home, they have to be staffed 24 hours. Ciora says in her Facebook video that is, will have a part-time person there. She has also said a part-time person will stop in. A group home is for people that are physically or mentally challenged. They are not. This is strictly a drop-in homeless shelter, which is in a group home and should not be permitted in the borough. Will tenants have background checks? Will there be registered sex offenders? Will it be safe for kids to walk to the bus stop? Sadly, they are targeted and murdered. You can go on their webpage to see the list of people who have been murdered. That is a huge fear for neighbor safety. There is no security. Vandalism and crime. Their last place was burned down by their own tenant. They also have another building in their webpage that they are fundraising for because they have been vandalized. According to Ciora herself, on her Facebook page, she is on welfare and food stamps. They will be running strictly on donations. Currently, they have $15,000. What happens when they run out of donations, and they can no longer afford to feed these tenants and pay their utilities and bills? What would become of that house and the current tenants that will have no jobs, homes, or vehicles? Thank you for your time, Kathy Detman. I'm gonna go through this again. Council will bear with me. And I do want to clear this up. The described use of this property is not that of a group home. It may be considered a shelter, but what it has been described is it is a home that is owned by Sisters PGH, and they are renting it out to tenants. They, there is a comment, the Borough knew in December and said they are just hearing about it. I can't speak to that. This information came to the borough a couple of months ago, and we have had a panel conference with representatives of Sisters PGH, the Executive Director, as well as their lawyer, Robert Daimowitz. of Sisters PGH, the Executive Director, as well as their lawyer, Robert Daimler. We were able to obtain information about that and if there, if any misrepresentations have been made, the Borough will follow up on that and make sure that the use that has been described is the one that, that is in effect. So, and I have already responded to the three, six, nine, or 12 months. We were told, in fact, in our meeting, that while there would be a one-year lease signed by multiple parties, those parties may change throughout the year, but that they all had to be paying tenants. They are not following the rules that came to a group home because they are not a group home. There are not services that will be provided at that location. There is not a full-time person in charge of, of the home. In fact, the individuals there are capable of living independently and so they are not in a rehabilitative mode, nor do they require those types of services. It's neither a drug nor alcohol rehabilitation center. It's, it's a, a property that is used as a rental to enable transgender adults to transition to, to their new lives. Again, I had responded to the background checks. The, there will be no, no requirement for background checks anymore than exists for other tenants throughout the borough. We talked about the registration requirement for sex offenders. Question, will it be safe for kids to walk to the bus stop? Our police are there every day. If there is a problem in that location, just as in any location, the police will respond to it. And I know that parents in Portview are diligent and we will make sure that if there is a problem, they will be in touch with the police. With regard to the fact that Ciora, Tom, is it Thompson, Melissa, or Thomas? Thomas is, has disclosed on her Facebook page that she is on welfare and food stamps. Frankly, I would say that's unrelated to the use of the property, so I'm not going to comment on that. They, if they are running on donations, the, their leases will operate as long as, I'm sure, just as any landlord or property owner will operate their property for as long as they can, as long as they can maintain it. This property, like all properties in the borough, are subject to all of the requirements of our property maintenance and ordinance and building code ordinance. Melissa is already in the process of working with them with regard to existing property maintenance violations. And so that will be an ongoing effort and if they do not properly respond and maintain the property, then we will handle that as we do other property owners. They will be issued a citation and if the property is not brought into compliance, they will go to the magistrate. So, and then what will become of that house if, if the money runs out? Unfortunately, Portview and other communities see that happen all too often, whether it's property, a property owned by an agency or an organization or a private individual. Right now, there is, there is a planned rental use of this property. Melissa has been in touch with Ciora Thomas and has notified her that she has to work with our third party that, that require, that establishes requirements for rental units and that is building inspection underwriters. And so they will be required to meet all of the requirements that the Borough has in place for rental units. So hopefully I've answered all of Mrs. Detman's questions. Again, if, Melissa, if there are any others, we can take care of those now, but that's all I.
All right, Melissa, is there any others?
I'm just looking over the follow-up emails from Kathy Detman.
Melissa, do you want to read them?
Okay, so I think this is from their Facebook page. And this is what it says, and, and this one was sent to me on Thursday, July 30th. I know that, I know that you are not on Facebook and she's referring to me. So I wanted to share this post with you from their page. It is reposted every day asking for donations. They are stuck at 15,000. At first, a lot of people donated. They are not going to be able to maintain this house and all of those people on donations. They are also advertising seven people and a group home is only allowed. We hit our, and then next paragraph, we hit our next, our first 15,000. Want to support Sisters Pittsburgh in the biggest way, I'm sorry, Sisters PGH in the biggest way? Please consider donating and sharing. Even if you can't donate right now, a share is free. Project T is Pittsburgh's trans-led transitional housing program. A prod, a project of Sisters PGH. And we need your help. Trans, non-binary, and other gender non-conforming individuals, that's TGNC, are among the most likely to experience housing insecurity. And this was true even before COVID hit our communities even harder. Now, is this the time where we're raising funds to launch the first year of Project T? A radical vision of self-determination and housing justice. With your previous help, Sisters has already raised the funds to purchase and renovate a house in Pittsburgh area that can house up to seven TGNC people while they transition from unstable environments and unsupportive communities. Now, raising funds to support first years of service, including sober living, management, transportation services, housing management, and more. As always, Project T is trans-led and focused on the needs and experiences of TGNC people of color. Our approach has intersectional lens prioritizing the most marginalized. As such, any staff or volunteers engaged in the project will receive extensive training in conflict resolution and brands, specific needs and issues. If you're not able to donate, donate right now, help us spread the word by sharing our campaign and/or this image on social media. tinurl.com backslash projecttpgh. I have another one that I'm in receipt of on the same day, Thursday, July 30th. And this was, again, addressed to me. There are people who don't, do not want to email the Borough because they don't want their names known. Those are questions being sent to me that I am forwarding to you. Everyone feels the Borough is sweeping this under the rug. There are people researching laws and ordinances. There are text groups and meetings. People are very concerned with the safety and property values. I was asked to share this with you. Looks like there are promises that are future-funded based and much more than the org is prepared to deliver at this point. This info was shared and the sum total of previous posts and actions is very telling. Nonprofits, while many truly desire to fill the gap and help PPL, soon find out the complex path to manifesting the vision is not the journey hoped for or expected and is a very costly one. A nonprofit is a business at the end of the day. I am detecting that the desired or essential basic infrastructure for this first-of-its-kind service facility needed by Sisters Pittsburgh community is still being built and fun, and funding is one of the keys and is missing. Some very important questions have to be asked and answered by all parties and revolve around the first article I shared regarding ten Qs for shelter backslash shelter system. Does the org have any GOV slash funding? Will the org participate under PA HUD? If there is a no-profit biz plan, admissions plan, service plan, et cetera, and basically, they're just some temporary homeless residents going to be arbitrarily selected and moved in with no services, support, or official oversight while fundraising, treatment model, and staffing is figured out and completed, question mark? We need answers. Kathy Detman.
You know what, Melissa, let's, let's respond to that series of comments. First of all, we have, have been, it has been explained to us by representatives of Sisters PGH that this is a residential location, that to the extent these individuals will receive services, those services will be provided in Swiss fail at their transgender support center. And, and Sisters PGH will provide transportation if, if necessary for these individuals to receive support services. So, so it is not anticipated that programs will be offered at this location. This is a residential use at this location. Whether or not, they, they have disclosed voluntarily on their website that they are soliciting donations for their programs. Whether or not they have government funding or will be participating under, under Pennsylvania housing or HUD, we would not necessarily have a reason to inquire into that unless there is, there is a reason that they are going to use that for non-compliance with our ordinances. And so if they are, if they are compliant with our rental ordinance and Melissa, as I indicated previously, Melissa is, is making sure that they don't open this facility until they are, then it, it is not necessarily, I mean, it's, it's not even appropriate for the Borough to find out how they, how they have their, their structure in place. They are just required to meet requirements of our zoning ordinance and follow our property maintenance and building code requirements.
All right. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Melissa, anybody other comments from any other citizens sent in for the meeting?
Let me just go back over the list.
I have everything checked off that I had on my list.
There's one more.
I did have Don Schuker.
I think that's Ronnie Schuker, so.
Don called me and asked.
Yeah.
Don?
Ron, Ron.
Called and asked if violent, but vibrant. Had a solicitation permit to come into the borough to be going house to house and they have not received one, so he said that they were at his house and I guess they were trying to sell and his brother had was there at the time. And he was not there and he had asked, do they have a solicitation permit? I then turned this over to the Police Department and said, hey, if you see them out there, please let them know they need to come down here and get a permit. I also advised Council as well that they were in the borough without permitting.
Yeah, they were in my house the other week, the other day. And I asked the young lady, I said, you do have a permit, right? I told her I was. Oh yeah, we got one, I said, well, if you don't have one, you better get one because we do not allow solicitation without a permit.
Okay, did anybody, did anybody get a card off them? Ken, did you get a card while they were there?
Soon as I asked her, she was like trying to.
All right, and Melissa, did Schuker give you a card or any phone numbers with the company or whatever on it?
He did. I called the company and I was on hold for about a half an hour. The number that he gave me, I was on hold for a half an hour and I had to get back to work.
Yeah, they've been here for years, Melissa. They've been here, because I had it before and they raised my rates and I said, nah, that's enough. But they were here for about, geez, eight, 10 years now before, you know.
For, once I asked for a supervisor in regards to the permitting of the solicitation, I went into the black hole.
Okay, so now, when you get time, you call again and you get ahold of somebody and if you can't, then turn it over to the Mayor and, and the Chief and they'll get involved in it, all right?
Okay.
All right, next, anything else, Melissa?
That's all I have. End of report.
All right, okay, that's our comments from the citizens. We'll go to number six. Code enforcement officers report, anything there, Melissa?
Nothing more that wasn't pretty much already discussed in our general run-of-the-mill code enforcement letters with high grass, property mate, and all the other ones that we had discussed.
Okay, next we'll go to number seven. Chief Police Report, Dave Petruski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing real more additional than what we discussed at the work session. I did want to go over again. With our Pennsylvania State Police audit, that everything went well as far as our clean and NCIC privileges. Our, our officers are using, are properly using the information from the dispatch. Nothing's being disseminated, so everything was up to par with the State Police. So we're good to go on that, probably for another three years. We usually get a three-to-four-year audit from the State Police when they come in here. And other than what I mentioned about the hiring of two or three part-time officers and if we could possibly revisit another full-time position for January of next year. That's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Next, anything else from our Engineers Report?
Thank you, Mr. President. All my items were discussed under the work session resolve. I do have one item, one item that's going to require a motion. And I'm recommending payment to Lawson Excavating in the amount of $12,231.25 for the installation of the electrical system and a transfer switch for the generator. And I'm also holding back a retainage of $643.75 for this item. And that's for half the project, so the rest of the project will be, the rest of the payment will be paid generator is up and running.
All right, so someone like to make that motion? Brian made the motion and Kenny second, all in favor, say aye. I have that so word. Okay, next up we'll go to our Mayor's Report, Brian.
Thank you. Just one informational thing, with the homeschooling possibility via the internet and that, I was notified by Comcast Customer Service Rep that they have a program called Comcast Internet Essentials. It's low internet cost and it's for income-eligible residents. If anyone would be interested that doesn't have internet access at this point, if they'd like to call Comcast and get information on the program, there's different ways out there that they can make this happen for the residents. With that being said, I just have a few statistics. As far as mileage for the vehicles, I have it for May, June, and July. The 2013 Taurus in May, 384 miles, 321 in June, and 318 in July. The 2017 Explorer had 2,360 in May, 1,968 in June, and 2,105 in July. The Ford Explorer, 534 in May, 993 in June, and 591 in July. For a total of 3,278 for the month of May, 3,282 for the month of June, 3,014 troy miles for the month of July. As far as expenses go, in the month of May, the only expense was three hundred and nineteen dollars and eleven cents for inspection. And for some brake work done on the twenty seventeen Explorer. In June, there were no extra expenses and in July, the twenty seventeen Explorer had a total of eighty-four fifty. Work done to it, it had to do, uh, with some repair of a tire and some oil change, oil filter and the whatnot. Um, if anybody wants a breakdown of the reports, uh, we have that fan here, we'd be glad to share that with them. Uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thanks Mayor. Next, we'll go to our solicitors report, Mrs. McGrell.
Uh, I have nothing further.
Okay, next we'll go into our council committee reports. Um, first up, we'll do, um, Brian. Chairman of Recreation.
I just real quick, I just want to say thanks to Dawn and Melissa for, you know, we seem to be moving. Along and there seems to be a light, you know, tunnel of the, uh, recreation facility. And, uh, just you guys diligence, I know we've run into some bumps. Guys have been working. Few big bumps.
Bumps, I like the bump term, yeah.
But yeah, you guys really working and pushing to, uh, get things moving along. Also Patty, uh. Um, with me living in the area of some of the, uh, properties we talked about tonight, uh. I do appreciate you answering questions and all of council's questions and all the residents and kind of getting the answer straight. I know there's been a lot of, uh. Misinformation out there and a lot of questions and people just concerned about something new that's our borough. And, uh, I do appreciate everything that you guys have done and the questions that you answered. Hopefully, it clarified some things for everybody.
Thank you, Brian.
And, uh, with that, I just have a few motions, Mr. President, uh. Motion number eighteen, motion ratify payment to McKee Asphalt for the paving of three alleys in the amount of twenty thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. As recommended by Don Glenn Engineering.
Motion on floor by Brian, second by Ken.
Yeah.
In favor, say aye. Have it so word, okay, Brian?
Uh, motion number twenty-one, motion to authorize donation of two South Allegheny football boosters in the amount of fifty dollars.
Motion on floor by Brian, second by Doug, all in favor, say aye. Have that so word, okay, Brian?
And, uh, one more, motion authorized donation to South Allegheny Band Parents Association in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Doug it.
Motion on floor, second by Doug, all in favor, say aye.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thanks, Bri. Next up we'll go to Mrs. Debbie Thomas.
There's a tax report collection from the, um, tax collector. This is, this one is for Jim. The real estate tax co- collection is up sixteen thousand dollars from last year at this time. Making, making up the difference, collections are on target compared to last year. The real estate taxes are now due at a penalty through the rest, through the end of the year. And then the report for July is, um. We are up over last year's nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty cents to the end of July. And, um, the total taxes collected for July was fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-one cents. And then I just have a couple of motions.
Okay, Deb, go ahead.
Number twelve, motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty dash zero one one. Authorizing the payment of bills and wages incurred during the month of June twenty twenty.
Second.
Motion for a second, roll call vote, Melissa.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Janeco.
Yes.
Mr. Horasko.
Yes.
Mr. Tortoise.
Yes, President on Tortoise Auto.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Betters.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next up, Deb.
Number, motion number thirteen, motion to adopt resolution number twenty. Thirteen dash zero one three, authorizing the payments of bills and wages incurred during the month of July twenty twenty.
Roll call vote.
Well, is there a second?
There's a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, go ahead.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Janeco.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Absolutely.
Oh, that's right, he. Mr. Horasko.
Yes.
Mr. Tortoise.
Yes, President on Tortoise Auto.
Abstain, Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Betters.
Yes.
Majority rule.
All right, next up, Deb.
I got one more, um, number twenty-three, motion to accept increased community development block, development fund. For funding year forty, forty-six allocations in the amount of. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars for Liberty Way and its three reconstruction.
Okay, motion on the floor by Debbie, second by Kenny, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it so word, okay?
That's all, Mr. President.
Okay, next up, we will go with, um. Dougie, Janeco.
Thanks, Mr. President. Uh, I, does Greg have any, uh, motions that I need to handle?
Yeah, right.
Yes, you can. Let me see here. Oh, you know what? I think I didn't even put Greg's on because he wasn't even sure that he was going to make any portion of the meeting. So we're actually okay, Dougie, thank you.
Thanks. Other than what we talked about in executive, um. Uh, the, um, demos are moving forward as, as, um, planned. Obviously COVID didn't help with the, uh, speed that I would like to get them done, but, uh, at least we're moving forward with it and, um. So, that being said, I have a few motions and, um, also want to thank Patty for answering those questions. The citizens, I'm sure there's a bunch more of them and I think we should stay open and try to get all the answers that all these citizens want. Um, moving forward because, you know, uh, they have the right to ask and we have the, we should be able to find the answers for them like we did and I, I appreciate that, Patty. Motion number sixteen, the motion to ratify resolution number twenty twenty dash twelve. Requesting a grant from the Commonwealth Financing Authority in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. To be used for blight remediation and demolition, demolition of unsafe structures.
Okay.
Motion on the floor by Doug, second by Debbie, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it so word, okay, Doug?
Thanks, I have number nineteen here, motion to approve the hiring of Diane Jackson with thirty-day initial probationary period. And contingent upon successful background check and drug and alcohol testing.
Motion on the floor by Doug, second.
Can I have a question, can I question this, please, one second?
Go ahead.
Uh, the length of, uh, does that still like a six-month probation after this, or is it just a thirty?
Yeah, but we're going to revisit after the thirty-day period.
Okay, thank you.
Initially.
All right, thank you.
Okay, motion on floor by Doug, second by Debbie, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it so word. Okay, Doug?
Uh, motion number twenty-four, motion to authorize the demolition of seventeen twenty-six Roma in front. Lot number four six five dash eight dash two four five and seventeen twenty-six Roma in rear. Lot number four six five dash eight dash two four seven.
Second.
Okay, motion on floor by Dougie, second by Kenny, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it so word. All right, Doug?
Yeah, that's it.
Mark.
Yes.
Um, could Doug also make a motion to authorize the borough solicitor to, um.
Yes.
File a, a petition for relief from stay with regard to seventeen twenty-one Johnson Street. And seventeen nineteen Johnson.
Can I say so moved?
Okay, motion by Doug, all in, uh, second.
Second.
Second by Ken, all in favor, say aye. All right. We'll go to Bobby Betters, Bob.
All right, Mr. President, uh, first of all, I'd like to, like I said, uh, do my report on the, uh. On the sanitation and the bit, uh. Keystone Collections or combined and delinquents are up. In May, we were up eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-two cents. And in June, we were up three thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty cents. So that's it for sanitation. Uh, as far as, uh, the other issues with the, the gutter on the garage, it's, it's. The back gutter is done and we're waiting on, uh, things for the, uh, uh. Uh, agreements on the front portion of the garage, the gutter.
All right.
Uh, an estimate done. And I have a couple of, uh, number fourteen, motion to ratify all departmental and intergovernmental. Transfers during the month of June and July twenty twenty.
Okay, motion on the floor by Bobby. Second, by Kenny, all in favor, say aye. Ayes, ayes have it so word.
Can I make a comment on that, the front gutter, please? Can we make a motion to not to spend up to so much and pre-approve of spending because it has to be done?
Yeah, we could do that or ratify it either way. If you can do that, you want to do it up to a thousand dollars, I think that's what.
Well, we can do maybe two, but, you know, just have a figure in there, so we can get that done because it's holding up the paint jobs. And, um, Bobby wants to get that done, so.
Yeah, we could do it either way, we can do it or we can ratify. If you want to do it, do it up to a thousand because that's the one bid, we know that one. Another one will be lower than that.
Okay, let's do that then. You want to do that, Bobby?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to authorize up to a thousand dollars to repair the front gutter so they can get moving on the painting. Kenny made a motion, is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Any comments, citizens? If not, so move.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
And number fifteen, motion to accept the monthly reports for June and July twenty twenty as presented.
Okay, motion on the floor, is there a second? Second by Debbie this time, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
How about, all in favor, say aye. We need six of us, all right, or at least four, all right. Next up, go ahead.
Uh, number twenty-six, motion to approve the revised deed of easement. And right-of-way between Pennsylvania American Water Company and the Borough of Portview.
As, as authorized by the engineer. Right, Patty?
Yeah, I would say as, as approved by the borough engineer and solicitor.
Okay, all right, terminology, Bobby, Bobby made a motion, is there a second?
Doug.
Dougie, get the second, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it so word, all right?
Uh, that's all I have for now there, Mr. President.
All right, next we'll go to Mr. Resko, Ken.
I guess you save the best for last, right?
Okay, I'm the last.
Oh, yeah.
That's okay.
What a put-down, gee. Okay, we got the rad tax from Allegheny County. It shows that this COVID is really affecting the rad tax. We were down four thousand, six hundred and five dollars in June. And at least we came up a little bit, we're only down nineteen hundred and thirty-four and. In July, so people not being able to go out kind of hurts everybody, even this old rad tax, so. We'll have to wait and see, once they open up some more things, come whenever this is going to be done, but who knows, so just bear with us, folks. I have fire reports. Okay, sit back, I got a few of them. During the month of May two thousand twenty, the Vigilant Hose Company number one. Responded to six total responses, calls. One mutual aid to the city of McKeesport for a commercial apartment building fire. One mutual aid to the borough for sales for containment detail as a result of a motor vehicle crash. Uh, two mutual aids, the West Millflyn Duquesne Annex for a standby detail while West Millflyn operated various. Structure fires in Duquesne. One unknown type fire, one assist for medics and extra extrication of a patient from a residence. In addition to above calls, various members have completed multiple online classes that include boater safety and CPR courses. Finally, has made the decision to cut off personal parades for residents as of July first, two thousand twenty. As our training facilities were, will be reopening and we will need to turn our focus back on training and fundraising for the department. You can see my official release from the company Facebook page pertaining to this matter. A sincere thank you for the police department and Chief of, Chief Petruski for all the efforts to do this as well. I'd like to thank them all, that was a great job. Everybody loved it, from little kids to big adults, so it was a great, great idea. And I think the residents really appreciate it. Thank you again, guys. Okay, now we got June two thousand twenty, to, ten total responses. One mutual aid to the borough for sales for commercial structure fire. One mutual aid to Liberty Borough for residential structure fire. Three mutual aids to West Millflyn Duquesne Annex for a standby detail while West Millflyn operated various structure fires. Two natural gas leaks inside a residence, one natural gas leak outside of a resident. One assist to the medics and one residential structure fire. In addition to above calls, members Charles Anderson and Derek Johnson completed their essentials for firefighting and live burn programs. Towing over two hundred hours of training each and have become state certified firefighters. Ladies and gentlemen, is that two hundred hours? It's all volunteer. They don't get paid for that, so please thank our fire department. And the last one's for July, this one's on lengthy, busy in July. Uh, it was nineteen total responses. Two CO alarm activations, one mutual aid to Liberty Borough for residential structure fire. One mutual aid to West Millflyn Duquesne Annex for a standby detail where they operated structure fire. Uh, two wires down, one mutual aid to Borough of Dubosberg for a brush fire. Three assists to the medics, one mutual aid to the borough for sales for an unknown type fire. One mutual aid to the borough for sales, again, for a C, CO alarm activation. One mutual aid to the borough for sales for a commercial structure fire. One mutual, one motor vehicle crash. One mutual aid detailed to West Millflyn Humville District to assist with our drone team in searching for a missing person. One assist police department with entry into a residence. One mutual aid into the city of McKeesport for residential structure fire. One mutual aid into West Millflyn Skyview District to assist with a drone team in the search for a missing person. And on the Long Ghalo River and one known type fire. In addition, seven members completed training on basic vehicle rescue. And if you paid attention to this, you see our, our police, our fire departments involved with other communities, they're not just sitting here. They're helping others, all around us and I'm sure these other communities will be here to help us too. And I'm glad they are in cooperation with each other to get this, you know, to protect us all in every community around us and I thank them again. Uh, I think I have some motions. Oh, back to the, uh, Feral Cat Program. Residents, when we do request, you know, for areas, please contact the borough building only. Uh, Melissa will take all the names down. Do not call anybody else, just call the borough building. We're responsible, we'll set up all the connections and do not bother other people because they're busy doing their jobs. But call the borough. You got the number? Please do that, thank you. I got several motions. Motion number seventeen, motion to ratify payment to the Vigilant Hose Company number one. In the amount of thirteen hundred sixty-one dollars to reimburse repairs to the two thousand eight Chevy.
Okay, motion on the floor by Ken, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Debbie, all in favor, say aye. Ayes, ayes have it so word.
So you know, this money comes out of your fire tax, so. Number twenty, motion to ratify payment to Elvis Electric in the amount of six thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars from, from Capital Reserve. The commer- camera system at the police department.
Or by Ken, is there a second? Second by Dougie, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it so word.
And number twenty-two, motion to accept family medical leave for part-time police officer Leandin Namuzio. Effective July fourth, two thousand twenty.
Motion on the floor by Ken, is there a second? Second by Dougie, all in favor, say aye.
And number twenty-eight is a new ad. This is the motion to advertise for part-time police officers.
Okay, motion on the floor.
Second.
Second by Brian, opened it up, can anybody get a comment? If not, motion on four, second by Brian, all in favor, say aye. Ayes, ayes have it sorted.
And I just want to thank everybody, this has been a productive meeting. So hopefully we can pretty soon get together as one team again on one area, so thank you all.
Okay.
Mr. President, did we do, did we do motion number eighteen?
No, we, let's see.
Yes.
We did eighteen. We did 18.
Yeah, Ryan did it.
Did some last one.
15?
Yep.
15 done. They're all done. All done except 27.
Right.
But, um, okay, so I'd just like to make comment, um, uh, want to welcome Rebecca Matloff, Kenny, I know you did it the executive, but since the regular meeting, I don't know that we did it here.
Yeah, that's right, we didn't, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, you want to say something, Ken?
Yes, we have, I do believe our 15th Junior Counselor, Rebecca Matlos. Uh, she's a senior this year coming up, and we welcome her, and we encourage her to get involved with us. And like I said, she's going to be the Easter Bunny, and she has to do 400 eggs for the Easter Bunny. But, um, uh, we will, we've had luck with, good luck with all of our, our Junior Counselors, and I'm sure Rebecca will be a great add to our group, and she looks very enthusiastic here, so, welcome again, Rebecca.
Okay, Rebecca, I want to congratulate you too, and welcome you aboard, and I know you go through a great job, okay? All right, and, uh, as for the, um, residents concerned, like Brian said, and Dougie and others, um, we are here to hear our concerns, we work for the residents of Portview. So, uh, we're with you on your concerns, and Patty, along with the Borough Manager, Melissa will continue to answer your questions, and hopefully, we'll get all the answers resolved for you. All right?
Mark, can I say something real quick?
Yes.
Um, once back, uh, when my dad was sick, you had mentioned something about, you know, everybody just keeping them with their thoughts and prayers, and, uh, I, I know your family's going through something, and I don't know how many people were listening or watching right now. But if you could pass it on, keep your family and your father in their thoughtful prayers right now, as you guys go through a tough time with, you know, your dad was probably one of the most influential and greatest people in this borough, and did so much for this borough that a lot of people don't know about, and his involvement with Athletic Association, getting ordered with the property up there, and just getting everything going. And just, uh, you know, I hope I didn't, you know, step on your feet here, but I just want to say, just keep everybody or sharing your thoughts and prayers.
Can I add something to that, please? Uh, you mentioned the PBAA, that gentleman took his dozer up there and dug all them fields out back in the day. Did it on his own time for free, and this, we have a great, great athletic association up there now, thanks to, he's one of the founders, one of the many founders, and did it for free for all of us, so, thank you, Mr. Tortis.
All right, thank you, guys, now you brought tears to my eyes, okay? Um, but with that, um, yeah, just to give you a little report, you know, he's 93. He's on hospice now, and, um, he probably don't have much long, so, thanks for that, and we'll move on.
Thanks, Mark.
For thinking about you, Mark.
Okay. Melissa, you have anything? Okay, but, you know, it's in God's hands now, so he'll take good care of him. So, okay, Melissa, you have anything?
No, I'm good, Mark, thanks.
Okay, so Counselor, what's your pleasure now?
I got, uh, one last thing that I'd like to say, Mark, about the, uh, we will be doing, uh, crosswalks, painting for Public Works, and line painting stop signs, so if the public would be a little considerate and, uh, patient with us while we're doing that, and don't run over our lines, and uh, let us get our painting done, we'll be, we'll be out of your hair soon. That, that'll be probably in the next week or two, we'll be doing all that. And I got one more motion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, don't do it yet. I got one more question for you. Are you planning to do a fall bin collection?
Uh, yes, that is the plan, to do, uh, I guess around October, we will be doing our second of the year, the, uh, bin days, yes.
Okay, thank you, we'll get that out there, so keep them up, so, thank you.
Yep, so in Oc, in October, we'll be, we'll be scheduling the bin days.
Great, thanks.
COVID, COVID pending, we'll see how that works, but as of right now, yes.
All right, good.
I got one more motion, number 27, motion to adjourn.
Second. One more, wait, we need, we need a couple more prayers, uh, we have our ex-police chief, our mayor, our councilman, um, Brian Myers Senior, not the junior one there, his, his, in a little accident, and we pray for him to get well and recover soon, okay?
Yes.
Now you could go ahead and do it.
Second.
Okay, motion, there we go.
Motion on the floor and second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, meaning adjourned, hey, everybody have a great night and enjoy.
You too, thank you, good night.
Mark.
Say goodnight, all. Good night.
Night.
Okay, Melissa, all done?
All done.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
I'll get out of here.
Hit me, Doug.
I'm trying to find it. I'm looking.
Melissa has to end us.